All right, good evening. My name is Kim Abel and on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Kitsap, welcome to the virtual forum for the candidates for Kitsap County Commissioner, District Two. Tonight's forum is a change from the League's normal in-person forums. The League is a membership organization and depends on our members to learn new software and to organize and run events such as this. So I am extending an invitation to each of you out there to become members and help us work on our basic belief that our form of government depends upon the informed and active participation of its citizens, and that means you. The League reached out through traditional and social media for questions. Some questions were on the same topics and have been combined to allow me to cover more issues with the candidates this evening. And we have five candidates who have agreed to attend this evening. The League thanks each of you for stepping forward to offer your skills and abilities to our county. You deserve the communities and each other's respect for doing so. The candidates who are participating tonight are Paul Newchams. I'll give a little wave so they know you. Thank you. Charlotte Garrido, Bob Perkins, Stacy Spencer Smith, and Marcus Carter. I wish I had an applause button. Thank you for being here. The ground rules for tonight's forum, we are giving the candidates 90 seconds for an opening statement. I will be inviting candidates to respond in the order that they appear on your primary ballot and after that modifying the order so all candidates are likely to have the same number of first responses. Candidates will have one minute to answer the questions you've posed and at the end of our forum, each candidate will get 90 seconds as a closing statement. And then we'll be done. Our timekeeper has an electronic clock to keep track of all this, although I may have to interrupt a candidate who goes over their time, but you can finish a short sentence. So with that, we will get started with our opening statements. You'll have 90 seconds and the first person's name on the ballot who's with us tonight is Paul Newchams. Mr. Newchams?
Hey, that's Dr. Newchams, but that's okay. This is no classwork. As a matter of fact, I knew Charlotte 12 years ago when we were both running for this position. And over the time, she's showed movies and one particular really interested me and that was the movie about Jane Jacobs saving her community when Bob Moses wanted to run Fifth Avenue right through Washington Square. Anyway, those movies did inspire me, but now I'm running again because I find that the hierarchy of the county is locked in a death battle with the bureaucracy of the county. And the truth and the good of the community gets lost in the battle. So I'm running in terms of my ideas and for the community. And one of them is an advisory committee for the three commissioners. And I'll talk more about that later as my time is running out.
Thank you, Dr. Newchams. Ms. Garrido, your next 90 seconds.
Thank you. I am Charlotte Garrido and I really appreciate the League coordinating this forum and I appreciate the other candidates being here tonight, too. I look forward to a great conversation. I am Charlotte Garrido and I am running for reelection as Kitsap County Commissioner in District Two. I've had the pleasure to live in Kitsap County for more than 40 years and I have served as a community activist, a small business owner, a contributing professional, and as an elected leader. With your support, I will continue to promote the following priorities and they are first to foster the success of locally owned businesses, which are the engine of a strong economy, protect natural resources and ecosystems, and to ensure the adequate housing is available to all residents of Kitsap County. So thank you again for inviting us to be here this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Garrido. The next person to have their opening remarks is Bob Perkins.
Thank you. I thank you for having me on. I'm willing to affect change in the community. I'm running on a platform of infrastructure. Streets are getting in disrepair right now. I want to make sure that we get that corrected. I'm also running on, I want to extend the infrastructure of Wi-Fi to the Mason County and also to the eastern side of Bremerton and Port Orchard for basic services for our children so they don't get left behind during this pandemic when they have to have classrooms outside of the school district. And I am a small business owner myself, I used to be, and so I know the perils right now that they're going through during this pandemic. And I have some ideas on how to help them through this. And with your support, we can get a lot done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. On to Stacy Spencer Smith, which is how she'll show up on your ballot, but we'll call her Ms. Smith for tonight. Your turn.
Thank you. Thank you, Kim. Good evening. I'm Stacy Smith. Thank you, League of Women Voters, for the opportunity to share a little bit more about me and who I am and why I'm running. Kitsap County Commissioner has been a professional goal of mine the past 15 years. I'm a lifelong resident of Kitsap County and a 20-year county employee. I'm currently the Director of Kitsap Aging and Long-Term Care and the Elected Board President of the Washington Association of Area Agencies on Aging. I have the privilege every day of serving you. My career with Kitsap County began as an on-call juvenile detention officer while completing my master's degree in counseling. I'm a trained and licensed mental health counselor. My top priorities as Commissioner are housing, COVID recovery, and opportunities for all. I am uniquely qualified to guide the Board of County Commissioners with my expertise in social services, spirit of collaboration, COVID recovery, and my forward-thinking leadership style. I'm comfortable listening and leading. I believe our local leaders should have a solid record of understanding our community's needs, solving our problems, and demonstrating leadership. I'm looking forward to answering your questions so you learn a little bit more about my accomplishments and why I'm ready for this leadership opportunity. Please visit my website at smithforkitsap.com. That's smithforkitsap.com. Or follow me on Facebook at @AlexStacySmith to my journey as your next county commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you. And the final candidate on our panel tonight, Marcus Carter. Mr. Carter?
Thank you, Kim. Thank you, League of Women Voters. We are again grateful just to be here and applaud the opportunity to educate the public as to our stances and what you can look forward to for whoever you elect as county commissioner. My name is Marcus Carter. I am running for District Two and I am running primarily because our county commissioners seem to have lost their way in understanding the proper role of government. And the proper role of government is to protect individual rights in accordance with our Constitution. Our Constitution, Article One, Section 32, says "A frequent recurrence to fundamental principles is essential to the security of individual liberty and the perpetuity of free government." We need to return to the idea that each individual matters. You matter. What your dreams are, what do you want to do for a business? How do you want to utilize your property? Those sorts of things have to get back into the forefront. And instead, we have a current leadership that seems to follow whatever the state mandates are or put to them as mandates when the reality is their job is to protect your rights, not take from them. www.carterforkitsap.com is our website and I look forward to your questions this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So Ms. Garrido, you'll have the first, no, I'm sorry, that's Mr. Perkins. You'll have the first shot at our first question and it'll be for one minute. Why do you want to serve as a county commissioner?
Well, I have a few things I'd like to get done. Like I said before, I'm looking to increase the infrastructure, get the roads and stuff spread away, and also about the internet. And also, I made a promise to the Sebeck folks that I was going to try to give them better access to the marina. And I kind of want to keep that promise if I can. And I think I can if I'm elected to the office of Commissioner. I also want to get together with the public and also to expand on the homelessness issue. I believe that we can provide homes first for those who are in need and to get people off the streets and get them back to working again. When people get to have a working, dignity comes back. They feel part of the community, you know, rather than just give them a handout, just give them a hand up. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Smith, your turn on this question.
Are we going out of order?
You are after Mr. Perkins on the ballot, so that's why I'm popping in here.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to go ahead and get started. The reason why I am running for county commissioner, this has been a lifelong journey of mine. I started on this journey 15 years ago. I've been preparing, asking for opportunities to continue to learn and grow. I am excited about the opportunities ahead for me. I'm ready to lead in this next leadership opportunity. My three priorities are important in our community, and that is housing, COVID recovery supporting our community's health, our economic stability, and small business recovery, as well as opportunities for all. I understand racial equality and social justice as key issues. I also think I'm uniquely qualified for the challenges that lie ahead with my subject matter expertise serving vulnerable populations. So I look forward to those opportunities. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. And you, Mr. Carter, how about you on this question?
Well, I'm running for county commissioner because I've been asked by many people within the community to run. I have a background where I have had to deal with the county on several levels, property rights issues, personal rights issues, et cetera. And the county has been, quite frankly, unresponsive to many personal rights issues. So I am running to be able to stand up for anybody and everybody that needs to have a voice. We've had too many folks that have tried to contact the commissioners and get an answer to issues or questions or problems that they're having and not getting any resolution. It seems that the current makeup of our county board wants to look at the bigger picture when the strength of our community is the individual. And they need to have a voice. They need to have their rights protected and that would be my job as county commissioner.
All right. Dr. Newchams, why do you want to serve as county commissioner?
Well, I'm very frustrated, like many of the candidates are, about the ability of the county commissioners to really have a hands-on communication with the huge bureaucracy. One of the things I noticed that there are African-Americans missing from the bureaucracy at the administration building. And I taught for 35 years at a historically black college, now a university in West Virginia. And I'd like to see a little more distribution of color within the county administration. So I have an idea, which I'm only going to get to quickly, about a committee for the commissioners. And I'll talk about that later, I guess, in summation.
Great. And Ms. Garrido, why do you want to continue to serve as county commissioner, I should say to you?
Thank you. Well, actually, there are quite a few things that I'm currently working on that I'd like to continue. The first one is I'm on the Workforce Consortium, the Olympic Consortium for Workforce Development. And I really enjoy creating jobs, understanding what the data says are the job needs, and helping to create the pathways to workforce development within Kitsap. And actually, it's for all three counties. It's Jefferson, Clougham, and Kitsap. We live in one of the most beautiful places in the world and continuing to look after our natural environment and enhance it is very, very important. And I'd like to continue to streamline county services. We did that significantly in the late 90s and it probably is time for a touch-up. We did some great work across every single department, some skill building, and we've begun that again, and I'd like to continue.
All right. Thank you. All right. Well, we're going to move on. Still, this might give you everybody a chance to expand on some of the things they talked about last time because it's what should be two of the highest priorities for county commissioners? Maybe not just yourself, but people, commissioners and county commissioners in general. And Mr. Carter, we get to start with you on that question.
Thank you. The two highest priorities for county commissioner, first and foremost again, is protecting individual rights. And with that follows, which would be probably a close number two, but is connected, and that's property rights. Our county has consistently, over the last 20, 30 years, has eliminated property rights and again, has not looked after the rights of individuals. We need to turn Kitsap County citizens loose to run their businesses, they choose to, to develop their properties. The housing crisis that we have currently is because this county has rezoned and instituted a permitting system that makes it virtually impossible to build and expand on people's properties. They have taken people's property rights when they purchase property with the ability to build on it, then once they save up to make the building happening, they then take the rights.
All right. And Dr. Newchams, how about you? What are your top, what should be the top two highest priorities of county commissioners?
Strangely enough, communication and truth within the system. The hierarchy at the top, the commissioners collude and otherwise lose the values and the ideas of the people of the county. When they get together with the high-up bureaucracy and frees people out, Carter was right. He said it right, that we have problems on our land, which the county ignores or lies to us about. I have a stormwater problem that floods my land and the county looks the other way. And deliberately, the commissioner, Dr. Garrido, this is Dr. Newchams saying, "You've left me in the lurch and I will keep on."
All right. And Ms. Garrido, your top two highest priorities for county commissioners?
Thank you. One of them is, a third one, is addressing Mr. Newchams' concerns, which I have dealt with quite a bit, and we just have a disagreement. But actually, reaching out to citizens, communities, and neighborhoods is a very high priority for me, and I do that. I go out and meet with folks where they live and talk with them and their neighbors so that we can get a better mutual understanding of how they can have a relationship with the county and the county could work closely with them. And I found that very satisfying with me and introducing people who live in neighborhoods who want to know more about what county government does and can do for them. Find that really satisfying. The other one is having a decent place to live for everybody who lives here. Those who are people who are having to live outside mostly are not doing it because of choice, because they have no choice. And we need to do something to bring them back inside. We have created in South Kitsap Consortium of agencies and people who are building tiny houses and we have replacing those.
Thank you.
Project Share, a South Kitsap group, is going to be taking over the management of that.
Thank you. Mr. Perkins, you are next on this question.
Yeah, thank you very much. I have a couple, my two priorities, my top one is mental health. We have a lot of folks that are walking the streets that are in dire need of mental health services and not enough provided for those guys and the women and people who are in desperate need of mental health services. We can't expect the police officers to be our mental health guides. We need to have services for these people. Secondly, is I'm looking at small businesses, the ones that have really been hit hard by this pandemic. We need to find common ground. We need to find a way to ease the burden on these businesses when they reopen, if they reopen, that they can pay back to the community so we can get our tax structure back. Right now, we have a deficit and we're going to have a big deficit as far as tax coming in from sales because our small businesses are not back online where they need to be.
Thank you. We'll have a question about that topic a little bit later. And Ms. Smith, your turn.
Thank you very much. So I have a little bit of a different take on this. So I think the two priorities as a county commissioner, the first should be the spirit of collaboration. I think we can get a lot more done when we work with our common jurisdictions. When I asked the city, the city councils, the tribal members, the tribal councils, the port commissioners, they said the county could work better in working with us. We have shared visions, but we don't have the same way of getting there. So I think the spirit of collaboration. I would also say what's absent is the Department of Defense and the U.S. Navy. They haven't been outreach either. So again, it's taking deliberate outreach of collaboration. And my second priority would be COVID. It is with us every day. It impacts us every day. And so we need to get to the other side of building a healthier community and our businesses need to survive. We'll get there together. Thank you.
All right. Well, that was a nice segue. Thank you, Ms. Smith. Our third question is about pandemic response. And Ms. Garrido, you get to go first. How would you rate Kitsap County's response to the coronavirus pandemic and what further actions would you want to take?
Well, there's a lot to do. I mean, this is something that none of us has ever faced before. It's bigger, it's creating death and illness, and it's going to continue to create financial instability. And somebody mentioned about the small businesses and their needs. So we are reaching out with some of our CARES money to create some funding for many small businesses. And I'm trying to remember exactly how much that was, about $800,000, I think, that we were going to create small grants to small businesses to help them weather the storm. Let me think, what else was I going to tell you about? COVID is really in our faces right now and it's requiring an awful lot of attention. And so I think that's where most of our attention needs to go for the next, until we can get ahead of the curve on it, and it's going to take a long time across the entire state and the United States.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Perkins, you'll have the next chance at this question.
Can you give me that question again?
Sure. Thank you. You all can do that anytime you need it. How would you rate Kitsap County's response to the coronavirus pandemic and what further actions would you want to take if elected?
Okay, well, I'm not a doctor, okay? So I don't, this is just my opinion. I think we've handled it pretty good. We're talking about social distancing and wearing a face mask and everybody's being protective about being around the elderly, who are most susceptible about this at all from the beginning. This is going to be with us for a while. We need, this is kind of like our new normal for right now until we get some type of a vaccine or something that can treat this disease. And so I think that Kitsap is doing a good job. I think we can do better with social distancing and also providing free masks to those who don't have it. I see people that are walking around on the streets that they don't have access to the mask and we need to provide that for them. I think it could be provided free of charge.
Thank you. Ms. Smith, how about you?
Thank you. So I would give the county a rating of a B+. So I'd like to share with you what I've done with the COVID recovery. So you remember January 28th, COVID hit Seattle. We were the hotspot. In February, I was called in to the Emergency Command Center as a subject matter expert as the long-term care director. I was part on the ground, my boots were on the ground. I was part of that human services team that developed your quarantine and isolation sites in the matter of two weeks. It was phenomenal what was done in Kitsap County to prepare us for the unknown, really, at that time. What I would do going forward is I think the county could do a better job with our communication. So I know I've heard from people in the community, they've outreach me, they know I'm a county employee. They're like, where do I get masks? Where do I find out about business support? How does this work? How do I connect up to notifications? So I think we could do a little bit better going forward in simplifying our message. Thank you.
Okay. And Mr. Carter, what about you?
Well, initially, I would, I think everybody was very cautious with what had happened, not knowing exactly what the extent of this was. But it quickly, the county's grade quickly went to an F, in my opinion. Kitsap County should never have pushed for the continued closure of businesses. They should have stood up for the rights of business owners. I don't know anybody out there that wants to see anyone else get sick. I trust the people of our community. I'm hoping the good that comes out of this is that people will understand what they need to do, what they should have done all along. And if you're sick, you're ill, you don't go out. I watched the Kitsap Health Board discuss with the one doctor that told the commissioners that masks were not all that they were, you know, made up to be, that they weren't the protection that people thought they were, and we have about killed our economy as a result. The commissioners should have stood up for our businesses.
Thank you. And Dr. Newchams, how about you?
Yes. The COVID-19 or coronavirus has skipped, to some extent, our county. We have only two deaths. That's pretty good. But there is lurking environmental danger that the governor said was an emergency and a crisis. And it's nice to have blue skies and people making do at their own homes. I have apple trees and I have other kinds of fruit trees and I don't need to go to the store as much because I have a garden. And that is very important in terms of sheltering in place. So we need to help each other pick up all those apples that people let rot on the ground before they rot and put them in a pot and make them good for freezing.
Thank you. All right. Our next question is about the county's budget. And Ms. Smith, you'll get the first chance at this one. What effects will the loss of revenue due to the coronavirus have on the county budget? If you are elected, how will you work with your fellow commissioners to fill that loss, such as new or increased taxes, reductions in services, staffing, or staffing, or a combination? And please be as specific as possible.
Okay, I'm going to do my best in a minute. I'm going to be talking fast. So what we know is that we have a 5%, up to 15% next year reduction in our general fund due to our loss of sales tax. So I think it's really important that you look at those voluntary discretionary opportunities first. You freeze travel, you freeze vacant positions that are tied to general fund. You look at opportunities to support local business so they can get back on their feet so you can get that engine up and running again. I think it's really important that the county look at their risk reserves and their fund balances to get us through this period. That's why that's there, is to ensure that we can get through these tough times. I would support the state taking on a new tax. I would also support the county association of counties and the state advocating for a federal stimulus package so all counties and all states can get additional dollars fairly. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Carter, you're next on that question.
Well, the county certainly has to tighten their budget. There has been a lot of wasted funds on litigation and other things the county has participated in even prior to the COVID that need to be dealt with. Different, while we need to maintain our infrastructure, there are some, you know, potentials for advancements that we need to see about putting on hold. And realistically, what the county needs to do is turn small businesses loose. The county itself, government by itself, cannot rebuild the economy. It's the people of this county that can rebuild the economy. The county commissioner should have stood up for our local businesses and got them back running much sooner than they have. And that way, again, the pain would not be near as deep as we're feeling right now. So... So the biggest thing that we can do is get our businesses back up and running full speed ahead.
Okay, Dr. Nutchams, how about you? What will you propose to fill that hole?
The committee just below the commissioners is a way of bringing the ideas from the CACs, the Community Advisory Committees, up to the commissioners by having them meet with the commissioners with an ex-official from the NAACP and an ex-official member from the Native American community as well. But the election of the people from the CACs that meet on a committee and deal with the appeals that come to the commissioners in detail and fairly and get the ideas right there for the commissioners to put the rubber stamp on that the hard work of the people do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Grito?
So this is a really complex question that's really hard to answer in just a minute. But we have started notifying all of the departments and talking with the departments about their 2021 budget, indicating, first of all, we did say there would be a 5% cut. Now we've said it will most certainly be at least 10%. And so we're asking them to review their budget and reduce by at least 10%. We did that in 2009, when we also had an economic downturn. And we found that asking them to look within their budget and determine where the cuts could happen was much more effective than if we dictated where they would come from. And we believe that that will happen again. And those are conversations that are happening frequently at this time.
All right. And I don't want to leave you off. Mr. Perkins, your turn on this question for the budget hole.
I was looking at the, at the budget and, and there's a few things that we can do. First off, each budget that I looked at, every budget should have a contingency, okay? When I was working for NASA, my budget, I always built in a 15% contingency for any, any project I was working on. And we can look at the contingencies of all, all the budgets overall. Also, I think there's about five or six positions that we can, that we can put on hold for not filling this year. And that would give us more money to actually put back into the general fund to make up some of that deficit that we would have this year. Those are what I would look at first, before we talk about doing any cuts of any type of anything out of the budget. Thank you.
All right. Great. Now, Dr. Nutchams, this is your turn to go first again since the start. So this is about housing and homelessness. What existing or proposed housing projects and programs for low-income and homeless residents do you support? And what are your thoughts on the funding and timeline for these programs?
As I gave the Kitsap Sun, which was printed in the paper, I had some ideas. There are going to be more commercial buildings available because they'll be empty. And, and by eminent domain, we can fill those buildings with people if they're homeless. There's no excuse for them being on the street. If they, unless they want to live on the street and they're not breaking any rules, fine. But basically, we should be able to help all homeless people. And second of all, snowbirds are not helping us environmentally by leaving the heat on in their homes and condos and going south for six months or eight months and then coming back to an empty house, which has been heated at least marginally. And I, I think that that shouldn't be allowed.
Thank you. All right. How about you, Ms. Grito?
Well, I think there's several things. I actually like the idea of looking at big unused business buildings. However, I'd have to look at the legal ramifications and the capacity to do that. Other than that, I believe we are creating, there's a partnership of Bremerton Housing Authority and, oh gosh, who else is in it? And the City of Bremerton and one other partner to create Pendleton Place, which will be located in Bremerton. It will create low-income housing for people in Bremerton. And that relates again to the tiny house buildings that are being created by many of the churches in South Kitsap. They're, they're buying materials, they're building the tiny houses, and we'll help with the infrastructure when we move the houses out to site.
All right. And Mr. Perkins, what's your take on this issue?
Well, two things I want to make, make clear. First off, renovating these old buildings that around, that around Kitsap, you gotta be careful with that because some of these buildings have asbestos and lead in them. And it could be more detrimental to do it that way than building a new house from the, from the very beginning. A second thing is Pendleton Place is, is coming up, but that's for the mentally, mental people that have mental problems and are getting off of addictions. What I would like to see is, is we have a lot of houses that's being built. I'd like to see us come up with the voucher program for a lot of people to enter these houses under the voucher programs. But there was no free ride. I mean, you got to, these people that go into these houses with these vouchers, you have to work. Everybody can do something. I believe, you know, you can, you can work for your house. Everybody can do something. Whether it's picking up trash in the streets, everybody can do something.
All right. Ms. Smith, how about you on this question about housing and homelessness?
Yes. So housing, safe and affordable housing that goes hand in hand is my top priority as a county commissioner. So there's been a number of studies that say Kitsap County are growth. We will need 25,000 new housing units to keep up with the demand in the next 15 years. So this is a priority. We need to take care of this now. What I would say is I've, I've provided over a dozen answers in my written response to the Vote 4011 to Women, the Legal Women Voters, so please look at that for my full response. But I really want to highlight explore rezoning to allow creative cohousing, shared. The tiny home project needs to get done. Let's look real creative at maybe RV space, parking spaces, because some people move to RVs because they want to be in RVs and others have to move to RVs. Let's remove some of the regulatory barriers. Let's revisit the duplex, triplex, townhomes and the cottage clusters. We need to aggressively go after federal funding for this problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Mr. Carter?
We need to remove regulation that county has put in place over the last couple of decades. Just a couple of years ago, Kitsap County put regulations in place to prevent organizations and churches from being able to take care of some people that are homeless, even for short periods of time on your property as well. They want you to come in and get a permit. It adds a layer of bureaucracy that is just unneeded. A layer, it takes money out of the, out of circulation and does nothing to help those that, that need a place to stay. There are many families that want to take care of folks, friends, et cetera, that need a short time help. And, and they just, they, they make it so tough with their regulation and permitting that they can't do that. People's property rights need to be restored. We are currently 9,500 housing units behind. And as Ms. Smith said, we need to get caught up and need to get caught up quickly, and we can do that.
All right. We're going to change gears here and talk about fireworks. And the question is, what could the Kitsap County Commissioners, or yourself if elected, do to promote the enforcement of firework laws, banning illegal devices such as mortars, rockets, roman candles, and the like? And Mr. Perkins, and I, I will say that we had at least four impassioned questions from four different people around the county on this topic, which is why we added it to the list, because it, yeah, it just happened July, but this is the question. I don't think these folks were as frustrated by the legal fireworks, but it was the, the illegal devices that were most concerning. So Mr. Perkins, you're first on that.
Yeah, that is a real hard one to deal with because, you know, people are going to go to the Indian reservations and buy these things and set these things off. And the police cannot be in every place at the same time. This year, because of COVID, we didn't have a, a major fireworks display, which I think we should have had anyway. Because you would have been safer just watching the main display go up than all these things being let off around, around the area. I was afraid of my house. They were tossing them off in my neighborhood. I would like to see the sales of fireworks banned in Kitsap, period. That would, I'd like to see that happen. But you still got people that go off the, the deep end and, and buy them in Seattle or whatever and bring them back to Kitsap and set them off. So I don't know how you stop that process.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Ms. Smith? It's your turn.
Sorry, I had to find the mute button.
That's all right.
I like this question. I haven't really thought about this question. So thank you for the question. I would say to promote enforcement, it's really important that we educate our community. I think people are in the moment. They think, you know, it's, it's fun and they don't realize the risks involved. They are dangerous. They are loud. My, I don't know about you, but my dogs took three days to calm them down. So because it was more than normal, because I think people didn't have those large celebrations. One thing we could do is we could have large gatherings again, when that's possible, to do those firework displays. That really does provide some balance. It gives people the time period, the expectation of when it's going to be loud and then when it's going to be quiet. And we're all going to be quiet. Again, public education and working with our community. I know there's subject matter people out, out there that have some answers. And I'd want to outreach to them and put some of their solutions into action. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Carter, how about you on this question?
Well, it seems that the county wants to grow a list of fireworks and other things that they would like to ban. And I don't think that's ever the answer. I think that, again, there are people that take issues way too far and take celebration beyond what, what was ever intended even by our founding fathers. I think the answer is to provide places for people to be able to utilize legal fireworks responsibly. We have some, some wonderful experts within our fire department and other places that can help demonstrate and show folks how to use them. In the same way that we have, we have race car, racetracks, we have shooting ranges. We have places for the safe utilization of those devices, and we should have that even for fireworks. So that should be the answer. Education and provide the resource and a place for them to, to take place.
How about you, Dr. Nutchams? What do you think about this issue?
I'm a nature lover. And therefore, I think first, how enjoyable the quiet is, listening to the birds, hearing the waves lap on the shore, et cetera, et cetera. I could live very happily without any fireworks whatsoever. Of course, I'm 86 and my main squeeze dog does not like it. He shakes all over. I, I would have one hour managed fireworks and only managed fireworks, and that's it. I, I wouldn't have people throwing, what are those, 80s, whatever they're called. I, I don't like them. I'm sorry. I wouldn't ban them, but I would strongly have them managed.
Thank you. All right. And Ms. Grito, you get the last shot at this question.
Well, it's a really tough question, but having grown up in Oregon where we had big community firework events, it has always surprised me that we didn't have as many here. And so I guess, having seen what happened this year, some of this, the, the noise, the, the sound was, was unbelievable. And I know that livestock was, was very, our livestock was very upset by it. So I would encourage going toward more organized events. I remember how enjoyable it was to share the opportunity to watch fireworks with other people who were enjoying the oozes and ahs of, of the beauty of, of big fireworks. And I think that we should have that opportunity. Maybe we should share it more instead of having lots of separate ones.
All right. Mr. Carter, we're moving. You get to start first, and I think you'll like this question. What infrastructure improvements, such as roads, bridges, sewer systems, stormwater drainage, traffic flow design, transit hubs, et cetera, do you consider priorities for the county? And how would you work to get these improvements funded?
Well, I certainly, repainting lines on a road aren't, isn't going to be the solution to some of our traffic issues. I just think we go to the developers that want to add to the development of where we're at. And they need to come up with the solutions. If they want to build homes, they, again, want to add to the business community, large buildings, et cetera. Those wanting to do that need to provide the answers for the infrastructure. As a hunter education instructor, there's a basic principle of carrying capacity of the land. And whether it's out in nature where you see how much, you know, what the land can, can sustain, we should be looking at that with, with what we have for people wanting to develop and add to our current infrastructure. Our priority should be maintenance of the infrastructure that we have. Let those that want to develop create new infrastructure.
Thank you. Dr. Nutchams, how about you on this issue?
Well, first of all, I would like to suggest for all of us to communicate for the rest of the election season, all the way to November, to communicate among ourselves, the candidates. And I can get, and you all can get the email address, just like I have for most of you already, and communicate. And try and help the commissioners do a better job. And with an advisory committee that I suggested earlier, I think we can do that. A member elected from the CACs to this advisory committee with ex-official from the African-American community and from the Native American community as well. We need to be up there helping rather than being managed.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Grito?
Great. Well, then, Mr. Nutchams, you probably love the stormwater park that was built in Manchester to filter stormwater coming from up on the hill to 91% purity before it goes back into the sound. It's really a demonstration that, that many, many other counties and states are looking at. But as far as I'm concerned, our Public Works folks do a really nice job of analyzing the condition of roads and bridges and walkways. And where there's need for additional ones and put those in their work plan and make those public. We talk to the, the communities, we talk to Manchester and Harper, et cetera, about the, the kinds of infrastructure that are desired within the community and have done work based on input from neighborhood groups. So I think that between the, the communities and county government, the workers who are out doing the kind of work, I think we're finding some really good solutions and maintaining good condition in our infrastructure.
Mr. Perkins, what about your infrastructure improvement priorities?
Okay, I'm glad you asked me that. This is it. There are two things. First off, the roads in, in Kitsap County are bad. In my house, I got potholes. They're so deep, my car's hitting bottom and out. Secondly, second thing is the Warren Avenue Bridge is in disrepair. You can drive across that bridge, look through and see, and see the water. And secondly is, Marcus, I think that lines do need to be painted. There's some lines on Sixth Avenue that turn onto Warren that are missing for those two lanes that turn on to Warren Avenue. There's been multiple accidents there, and I've been on the, into the paper about having that road striped. And it never, hasn't got done yet. Secondly, I would get the money. I would look to the federal government because we pay taxes and gasoline taxes specifically for road repair, okay? And I would like to see where we can get some federal grants to do that. And my primary thing is for the Warren Avenue Bridge, that'd be in my top priority. But that's the major thoroughfare through the city.
Thank you. All right. And Ms. Smith, how about you?
Yes, thank you. So I have a similar answer. I think it's the infrastructure tied to our roads, but it's because of the traffic and congestion. So we know we live on a peninsula and two islands here in Kitsap County. Most people don't realize we're the third most densely populated county in the state of Washington. So that's a lot of people in a little bit of space. And we are growing. And it's all tied to housing. And we are growing and it's all tied to housing. If we build houses, people need to be able to get around and our roads are very congested. We are surrounded by beautiful waterways. We need to be using them as a, as a point of transportation. If we had more bike paths that connected natural foot ferries or more just Kitsap ferries, I think that could go a long ways. It is true, you can row a boat faster between Waterman to Bainbridge Island than you can drive there. That's a fact. I've done it. So I would say also preserving our waterways is tied to our sewer systems. They need to be maintained. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Greedo, you get the first chance at this question. How can the county strengthen their relationship with Kitsaps' major employers, including the Department of Defense, defense contractors, and manufacturing firms such as Safe Boats, et cetera?
I have served on the Economic Development District Board for several years now. Commissioner Wolf is on it. I have visited Safe Boats several times and really appreciate the work that they do. So I think going and visiting and have, and having a relationship with the business is really important. And the same is with, is true with Navy. Somebody said earlier that we don't work closely with the Navy. Actually, the Navy serves on the Kitsap Regional Coordinating Council with the cities and the county electeds. So it's really an important place for us to begin to discuss land use and infrastructure and different kinds of coordinated solutions across Kitsap County. And we do that on a monthly basis, year round. So I believe being, being on hand, understanding what things look like and talking to people is, are all important facets.
Thank you. Mr. Perkins?
Yeah, give me that question one more time.
Yep, sure. How can the county strengthen their relationship with Kitsaps' major employers, including the Department of Defense, the defense contractors, manufacturing firms such as Safe Boats, and et cetera? And others, I should say.
Okay, I, I, I kind of agree with Charlotte that we need to get out and meet with these folks and discuss what their needs are, how we can help them grow their business. I also need to touch base with, with, especially with the military. We don't really extend to these guys as much as we should. They did a lot, they, they do a lot of, of good. They helped the, on the path they put across the the avenue there, the entrance to the, to the naval base. But we need to get them more involved in the infrastructure of the city and traffic flow and everything else. And if we work with the Navy, God, we can, we can, we can do a whole bunch. And I think that we also need to touch base with the people at the port, at the Bremen Airport. There are also, there are businesses out there that we can bring on board, that we can meet with and see what their needs are. I think there was one group that we talked, we were talking about, getting, reaching out to
Well, darn, you stopped. Thank you. I was gonna just interrupt. Thank you. Did you? Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Ms. Smith, it's your chance at this question.
All right, so I'd like to share with you a little bit about me. So I am three generations that have worked, my family, at the Kitsap Naval bases. So I have both my parents, my uncles on both sides of my family, my cousins, all of my cousins, my husband and my son, they all work there. So I am uniquely in the middle of conversations on a daily basis. The county can do a better job working with the Department of Defense and the U.S. Navy. The U.S. Navy supports these military active duty and their families come here to live here. We can do a better job supporting them. The problem is we're competing. We have fantastic jobs here, but we don't have, we need to attract more of a workforce to fill those jobs. And that's maybe one of the hesitants to bringing even bigger business here. We need to ensure that we're working with our ports. They have some great ideas. Let's listen to them. They know how to woo those big businesses here. We need to have housing for that workforce. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Carter? I think you're on mute.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
We, we just need to find out, talk with them and find out what they need and then put the red tape so that they can get, get to the areas that they need, that they can do the expansions that they need to do. We have stifled other opportunities within this county because of all of the, the permitting scheme that we have and the things, the roadblocks that we put in the way. We need to be able to, in, you know, expand the opportunities with these businesses with local help. We need to be working with the local trade schools, et cetera, and showing them that, that it's Kitsap County that's going to provide the workforce that's necessary for them. We have a lot of talented people here and we need to utilize that. Again, permitting, the, the Department of Community Development has just gone overboard under the direction of the county commissioners in stifling growth of our businesses. And it's time we turn that around.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. And Dr. Nutchams, you get the last chance at this question about our major employers.
Well, the one issue that came up in Manchester CAC was whether they were going to the, going to, let's see, build, rebuild the oil, oil storage area by bringing in the new equipment through our main artery in Manchester, which is, would be a terrible idea. And I don't, I guess this is a question for Charlotte. What is the status of that?
Well, you get to keep talking on your 20 seconds.
Okay, well, I like kayaking. I have three kayaks and my friends come over and family come over and use it. And we go to Blake Island and other locations, including going past the Naval Depot. And on the way to Manchester State Park.
We're right there at your 60 seconds.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, we're still talking about our economy. And this is more about small businesses. And Ms. Smith, you get to start with this one. How can the county assist small businesses as they struggle to recover from coronavirus closures and the other adverse impacts that they have felt?
Yeah, so small business is on my radar. They are the backbone of our community. So the county can do a better job, like I said earlier, with messaging. Small business wants to open their doors, so we just need to give them the information in an easy-to-read format. The current book that's out, The Pathway to Recovery, it's not a readable document is what small business is telling me. I also think that the county needs to do a better job handing out masks and ensuring that businesses are meeting all the protocols that are set forward by our governor so that we are ready for the next phase. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Carter, how about you on that question about small businesses?
You're on mute.
You're on mute. You're right, Paul.
Again, there we go. Thank you. Kitsap County needs to stand up for small businesses and they just refuse to do that. The, the governor's mandates have been arbitrary and largely from what I see from the data and, and a lot of the medical community is absolutely unnecessary. And that's what's killed the economy. Our county commissioners should have stood up to the state and told the state that their job is to protect the individual rights of the citizens of this county and that we're open for business. When you look at the numbers of Kitsap County throughout the COVID pandemic, again, we, we don't have the problems that they've had in other areas and we just need to be open. The, when the state steps up to threaten small businesses and find them, as they did with that one place or other places, the county should be standing up to protect those rights and if necessary, doing it through legal means.
Thank you. Dr. Nutchams, what do you see as how the county can assist small business?
Okay, I had a small business in downtown Port Orchard. It was an art gallery. And those five years that I was out and down in the dregs of that, the buildings in downtown Port Orchard, I just shook my head. I couldn't believe that the county would allow that to just rot down there in the downtown of Port Orchard. And whenever I brought it up to the city, Port Orchard, they say, we don't have the money to do anything. So the money is in the county and the county should be ashamed to just leave it that way. And so culture, culture is a big need. We don't have any music groups, singing groups, art museums, except a few small ones. And I'd like to build an art museum on my land if Charlotte, Greedo, and the commissioners loved it.
Thank you, Mr. Dr. Nutchams. Ms. Greedo, you're next on this question.
Okay, so the question is, small business.
How can the county assist small businesses as they struggle to recover from coronavirus closures and other adverse economic factors?
Okay, I had mentioned that we received about $800,000 in cares, federal cares dollars. And we are allocating those out into the small businesses. Part of it went to, I think about 130,000 went to incorporated cities to distribute and 750,000 went into unincorporated for areas for distribution to small businesses. And that's in process now, so I'm not sure quite how much has been distributed, but it was up to $5,000 per business. They needed to demonstrate the, the loss of funding due to COVID.
Okay. So, Mr. Perkins, you'll have a chance at this question now.
Yeah, I, I did, there was, you know, that money that was allocated for small businesses to recuperate during the COVID-19? A lot of these guys didn't, all these businesses didn't get it. My thing is I want to see the BNO tax rate go down. Businesses that I talked to, they, that is so high that they were, they were struggling before the pandemic. And after the pandemic, a lot of them didn't think they weren't going to be able to reopen anyway. When, when the BNO goes down, sales go up, more sales tax revenue comes in. And I think we can do that as a start to help businesses get back on their feet as well as, you know, making sure that they get this money from the pandemic that we, that they should have gotten in the first place, a lot of them didn't get. To help them along and make them strive, make them more accessible to the community for, after this virus gets abated.
All right, thank you. All right. Dr. Nutchams, you get the first chance at this question. Should the sheriff's office funding be increased, decreased, or stay the same, and why?
Education, education, education. Law enforcement is a problem in lack of understanding their purpose for the community. It certainly isn't gun, guns in the pocket. You know, the Bobbies in old London didn't have guns and they did a pretty good job of enforcing the law without guns. Why not try that for Kitsap County? I'd love it. I'd love it. Talking to people, helping them solve their problems because they're too close to them. That's the way marriages are in our culture. People are forced to be together. I don't know why that's making me laugh because I've tried to avoid as much of that as I could in my life.
All right. Well, thank you, Dr. Nutchams. Ms. Greedo, your chance at this question.
Well, the way that we deal with the budget is we have each department come in and explain to us what their requests are and defend especially additional requests or additional costs. And we, we determine whether to make that increase based on, first of all, how much money is available. And second of all, how, how definite the need is. So I can't say ahead of time before the budget process, which is usually in late July into August is when we hear from each department and make the decisions later in the fall for the coming year. And so that gives us the, the opportunity to hear straight out what the requests are, to begin to meld the, all the requests together, looking at the bottom line of what it's really going to run to and know where we're going to have to make additional cuts in the overall budget before we actually approve the final budget. And so that gives us more discourse across departments during the budget decision process.
All right then, Mr. Perkins. Would you, should the sheriff's office funding be increased, decreased, or stay the same, and why?
Okay, well, first off, I'm not a proponent for defunding the police. I am a police advocate, okay? I think the budget needs, I would have to look at that. I think that we could do some more training. And you know, the, the police, our police are the first line of defense for this, for this, for this country, for this Kitsap County. I was raised that when you need a problem, if you have a problem, you seek out a police officer. I have always been an advocate for the police department. I have never had a problem with the police. And in fact, half my family's on the police force, so. Me, as far as defunding the police, no, I would never do that. I would look for other, maybe a little bit more money for, for better training for the officers. I had to handle situations that deal with domestic calls because these are the most problematic calls that they go on and the most dangerous. So that's what I would be looking at and I would never cut the budget on the police department.
Thank you. And Ms. Smith, how about your answer, please?
Yes, so my answer is the funding would stay the same for our sheriff's office. We have a very talented sheriff's office. They are in charge of our patrol as well as our adult jail. And they are extremely smart in looking at special revenue to meet their local gaps. They use the 1/10th of 1% funds to support crisis intervention training. And they also look at bringing in behavioral health supports into the jail. They work with our behavioral health navigators. We should be proud of our sheriff's department. They do a fantastic job. And I would want to work with Sheriff Simpson on how he would envision the future and focus to ensure safety as well as the best use of their resources. Thank you.
All right, thanks. And, Mr. Carter, you should turn your mute off and then you can answer this question.
Add it off at the start of this.
Oh, direct. I thought I had.
Well, the sheriff's, the sheriff's funding certainly shouldn't be decreased. There, perhaps, again, we could talk with the sheriff's department about possibly reallocation of funds in different directions. I have worked with and seen some of the finest officers in the nation are right here within Kitsap County. Many of them are extremely frustrated because they are now taking on mental health calls at a rate that they've never seen before. Daily, they're, they're taking in calls of that nature. It has been good to see and we ought to see an increase in training for de-escalation techniques. It has, it's been good to see that that has taken place to a large degree and is, is working out more. We need to get back to the idea that, that our, our law enforcement folks are peace officers and not code enforcement officers. Most people don't know that our Kitsap County sheriff's deputies do not take an oath to uphold the Washington State Constitution. They take an oath to uphold Kitsap County code and that's wrong.
All right, thank you. Our 11th, we have probably a chance for two more questions if everybody stays on their one minute. Mr. Perkins, you get the first chance at this question on racial and economic justice. What county actions could be taken to lessen the effect of systemic racism and economic inequality?
systemic racism, you know, that, that seemed like to be the buzzword they have nowadays on, on what people. You know, there have been injustices in the past for people. But I'm, I'm, I'm a firm believer in everybody gets a shot at everything. I'm, I'm an equal opportunity guy. I believe that this system is, is maybe not be perfect, but it has, provides equal opportunity for everybody. You have to put your best foot forward. Your attitude determines your altitude. You know, you can't go in this with a chip on your shoulder, with the world owes you something. You know, everything that you have to get, you get, you work for, you know. And, and I have never had a problem. I've worked for anything that I have gotten. And people have always promoted me along the way. I've never had a problem with, with a racial thing, but I understand that it, it does exist, but we need to, if we can correct it.
Thank you. Ms. Smith, you're next.
Thank you. So I would say with my 25 years of experience in mental health, I know my implicit biases and I understand the opportunity for all to thrive. It's one of my top platforms. I work in human services every day. People of color, youth, families, older adults, younger adults with disabilities and those challenged with poverty. I understand how people feel marginalized by systems because they are. So I would say that you're more likely to die from COVID because you're a person of color. That's wrong, that we need to fix that. I would encourage the county to take actions to level the playing field. We need to increase our human services and our prevention services. We need to increase our safety net and that includes a large safety net with our community action programs, our law enforcement and human services. I have attended a couple NAACP local meetings and their ideas of a task force. I love that idea. So let's get behind that as a county. That, those are some of my ideas. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Carter, how about you?
I, I think Mr. Perkins hit, hit the nail on the head. I have not experienced or seen systemic racism here. I, we have people of all colors, all flavors here, people that, that work hard, advance and that's, that's a fact. That's what we've seen. You know, we're all part of one human race and unfortunately between the media and other things being thrown at us, they try to divide us. When, when our creator gave us this wonderful kaleidoscope of melanin in our skins and we ought to be embracing that and most of us do. That's what I've seen in Kitsap County. So I don't think, I don't see that as an issue or as, as a problem. We should be treating everybody as an individual. Again, our constitution says the purpose of our government is to protect and maintain individual rights. That's every individual, not a class of people. We are all part of a human race and we need to start acting like that. And regardless of what you see on the news, just embrace your neighbor and love them.
All right, and Dr. Nutchams, your turn on, on this question. What can the county do?
You hit the, the question one more time.
What county actions could be taken to lessen the effect of systemic racism and economic inequality?
Well, I'd like the county to stop managing us in our CACs and, and throughout the county. We're managed too much by the county and instead of listening and promoting the ideas from the ground up, so to speak. And the committee that I suggested with an ex-officio from the NAACP and from Native American organization would help get the ideas up to the top along with the elected members from the CACs. That's what I would like to see. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ms. Garrido, how about you?
Well, I actually love what Bob and Marcus said about us being humans and one, one race, one human body. And I, and yet I do have friends who are tribal members or who are African Americans or Filipino Americans, et cetera, who indicate that life is different for them than it is for me or for others who, who are not of their ethnicity. So it seems to me that broader conversations about what equity looks like and, and that's in daily matters. So you look at, for example, how many in our workforce of Kitsap County are people of color? Not many. And the Equity Council or actually the Embrace and the NAACP have urged the county commissioners to create an Equity Council and I believe that's, that's a good idea. We do have a, a Human Rights Council, but it has existed for a long time and has, has a broader mission. I think if we did drill down on the equity question and a more popular conversation, that would be a valuable contribution to our community.
Thank you. All right, our last question before closing remarks and Mr. Carter, you'll have the first chance at this. Name two individuals or organizations whose endorsements you are proud to have. How much money do you expect to raise during this campaign and who are your major donors?
Uh, well, two individuals or, or organizations. Well, I am proud to have received the endorsement of the Puget Sound Patriots Tea Party and the revitalized Republican Party of Kitsap County. The endorsements of my family and, and friends and a number of others that, again, I have been grateful for. The majority of, of the funding for my campaign comes from individual neighbors, people in the community that know me, that want to see me get into the office of county commissioner so that I can make a difference. How much money do I expect to raise? Enough, hopefully, to win the race. It's, to me, it's open-ended. I would rather have people's time, energy than I would their money. I mean, we need to come together as a community and start talking about these issues and put it out. So money to me is not an issue, but it is a fact of life.
Thank you. Dr. Nutchams.
Yes.
Go ahead on this one.
Okay. I'm going to spend very little money in the primary. If I am lucky or unlucky enough to be one of the two people for the general election, I'll spend my money then. I've asked no money. I've bought no signs. I have not cluttered your mailboxes with my picture and ideas. I'm trying to put them in the newspaper and that's been a little difficult for me because they want me to rewrite and rewrite and rewrite. But nonetheless, I'm going to stay in the race this time. Charlotte, Stacy, I'm in it until August when we count the votes.
Thank you, Mr. Dr. Nutchams. Ms. Garrido, you're next on this.
Okay, you're going to have to remind me of all the pieces-
Two individuals or organizations whose endorsements you're proud to have, how much money you expect to raise during this campaign and who are your major donors to date?
Oh, gosh. I'm really proud of every single person who is supporting my campaign and it's hard to pick, I mean, sure, I could pick a, a couple of well-known names, but I think every person who has, has expressed support is, is much, much appreciated. I, I look forward to raising about $40,000 during the campaign and what was the last piece?
Who are your major donors to date?
Oh, um, you know, there are, there are quite a lot of donors and I, I haven't looked at the exact amounts, but the range is from $5 to about 150, maybe 200. My family has been very generous, but I just really appreciate the support of everyone who is stepping forward to, to back my campaign.
Thank you. And how about you, Mr. Perkins?
Okay, well, currently I have the, I have the backing of my church as support of my wife and family and I would like to get the, the backing of the League of Women Voters, you know, and I'd like to get the backing of the sheriff's department. As far as money spent so far, it's been very minimal. I haven't done it yet. I'm looking to spend a lot of money out there to get my name out in, at the Kitsap County and around the area of Mason County. My major contributors so far have just been the family and myself, but I will be reaching out for, for more contributions as we go along. I guess that's about it.
All right, thank you. And Ms. Smith?
Yes, thank you. I'm super excited to answer this question. My two endorsements that I'm most proud about are Kitsap County Ask Me 1308. So it's one of the largest unions of Kitsap County employees. They stand behind me as their sole endorsement and I am excited about that. I'm also the sole endorsement of the Kitsap Young Democrats, sole endorsement. They see me as their future and I look back at them because they're our future. I'm also excited about the National Women's Political Caucus, which is a non-partisan, non-partisan committee that stands behind women, strong women with potential. So I'm excited about that. In studying this race, it looks like the typical spending is 30 to $35,000. I'm prepared to spend up to $40,000 to win this race. And I have, as far as my donors go, I have more donors than anyone else in this race. They are small donations, but it's over 80 people that have donated to my campaign and I'm proud of that. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just let you all know, the League of Women Voters never takes positions on candidates. So sorry, Mr. Perkins. Well, I just wanted to thank you all. We're going to do, next, we're going to go into closing remarks. And first up with 90 seconds is Ms. Garrido.
Well, again, I want to thank you, excuse me, and the League of Women Voters for inviting us to participate in this event. You know that I believe people have the power to make a difference and our future depends on a strong economy, a healthy environment and people working together. That's why I want to be a commissioner so that I can help people work together on behalf of our wonderful community. Thank you again.
Thank you. And how about you, Mr. Perkins? Your closing remarks, you have 90 seconds to sum up.
I want to thank you for the opportunity here that you guys gave me for this, for this forum. Would you vote? I want to really be a part of the community. I want to get out there and help with the homeless, with the, with the infrastructure, like I said before, and also with the education with our young people. I want to be, increase our mentorship programs. And I spent 32 years working for NASA. I understand the, actually, the handling of big budgets and, and also work with the EPA and OSHA. So I know everything about, I know all about safety precautions. So with your vote, we can really turn this peninsula around. We can make it better for everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Ms. Smith, you're next with your closing remarks. And you can take your whole 90 seconds, guys. It's really fine with me.
Okay, thank you. So thank you, Kim. You actually made this really fun. Very much to the League of Women Voters for the opportunity to share a little bit more about who I am this evening. And I appreciate the effort to host this and other online forums. I have worked in partnership with the League of Women Voters in past age wave forums. I know the work you've put into this. Thank you. I'd like to thank my fellow candidates who participated this evening. And I want to thank the citizens of Kitsap County for your time to log in and submit questions. As I stated earlier, Kitsap Commissioner has been a lifelong professional goal of mine. I'm a lifelong resident of Kitsap County with over 20 years county experience. Kitsap County is my home. We have enormous challenges that lie ahead for us and the state and our country. As your next county commissioner, I have the vision for a better tomorrow, the ability to build trusted relationships and I know my implicit biases. I, because at the end of the day, it's about us. It's about our community. It's about our future. We want the same things. I'm open to new ideas and stepping forward with solutions. As I shared in my opening, I am uniquely qualified to guide the board of county commissioners with my expertise in social services and the inside-up perspective of local government. I know what departments work well and which ones can work better. I'm the best qualified as the next county commissioner. When you vote for Stacy Smith, you vote for our future. Stacy Smith for county commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Carter, your 90 second closing, please.
Again, thank you, Kim, and, and everybody associated with the League of Women Voters. You have made this an enjoyable experience and, and have, you know, pulled it off wonderfully so. I want to thank the voters of Kitsap County that have tuned in and that will tune in to watch this and make your decision. We have a primary coming up August 4th. I would encourage you to go to our website and to find out more details, contact me personally. Be happy to talk with you. My goal as a Kitsap County Commissioner is to turn you loose, to turn you loose for, on your property and your, in your business and to get county red tape cut out of your way. I trust you. I know that the best solutions to the, the issues that the county faces will be answered by you, not by Kitsap County in, in, up there at, on Division Street. You can count on me to protect your rights. You can count on me to be responsive and I will do everything I can to see to it that your rights are protected, every one of them. Develop your property, develop your business. What are your dreams? You can fulfill those and I'll help you do that. www.carterforkitsap.com is our website. Again, you can find us on Facebook. My phone number, I'm, I'm easy to find. Let's talk. Thank you.
Thank you. And Dr. Nutchams, you get the final 90 seconds from the candidates.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'm, I'm very proud to be part of this group of six candidates and I believe there's one more, Mr. Root, who decided not to come, but I want to thank you, Kim, and the League of Women Voters. This has been a lot of fun and interesting, get to know the six of you better. And I hope we communicate with each other into the, the rest of the campaign, all the way to November and beyond. The whole next year as well, without Mr. Trump. I had to say something like that. I'm sorry if I ruined your day by saying his name. Anyway, but Charlotte, whether you're still commissioner or not, you will know that the Stormwater Park is only part of downtown Manchester. East Daniels Loop has the same problem that you solved with the Stormwater Park to the south of me. But I've held off filling in my land because it's, where is the water going to go? That you and Mr. Deener and the other commissioners who have allowed you to meet with other people in the bureaucracy to freeze me out.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Nutchams. And I want to thank each candidate who took the time to use this new format to reach the voters. As much as I can do, maybe we should all give each other a round of applause because we did a great job. And you guys, 90 minutes went really quickly. Thank you for answering each question that we could get to. Once this forum is, has been uploaded, folks, you can find a link on the League's website. League's website is lvw-kitsap.org. And then you'll find the link and you can send it to your friends. We want to make sure voters have all the information they need to make a good decision in November, excuse me, August. And so we have a votefor11.org website where we ask more questions of the candidates or you can look at your voter's pamphlet. There's lots of possibilities. Hopefully this forum has helped you choose a candidate when you return your mail-in ballot on or before, as Mr. Carter said, August 4th. So look for your ballot in the mail by the end of this week and please encourage others to view this forum and vote. It's been a great pleasure and privilege to work with you tonight. Thank you all for stepping forward. And with that, we're done.
Thanks.
Bye. Good night.